Start our meeting. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk, please call a roll.
Roll call. Uh, trustee Moravka?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Sluse?
Here.
Trustee Sturba? Trustee Hamm?
Here.
And trustee Bowden?
Here.
In your packets were a couple of minutes. One was from our May 24th public hearing for the appropriations ordinance and also for our regular village board meeting on May 24th. So are there any additions or corrections to the public hearing one first? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
The move by trustee Moravka, second by trustee Hamm.
Roll call vote. Trustee Moravka, yes. Hamm?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sturba?
Got everybody?
No.
Motion.
Who'd you miss?
Did I miss anybody? Julie. Sluse. Sorry.
Okay, next is the, uh, any additions or corrections to our regular village board meeting of May 24th? Uh, I told, uh, our clerk on the public works report, it says Wilson Street and Alburn Street projects are up for review by IDOT and that should be Wilson and North Street projects are up for review by IDOT. And then the next sentence, uh, it says IDOT in June, MFT resurfacing. So that should read that the West Street project, the MFT resurfacing is gonna start in June. Any other corrections or comments? Not, a motion to approve?
Motion.
The move by trustee Hamm, second by trustee Bowden. Oh, Jones, I'm sorry.
Roll call vote. Hamm?
Oh, Jones.
Oh, Jones.
Yes.
Hamm?
Then Bowden.
Oh, then Bowden, okay.
Yes.
Uh, Sluse?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Am I missing anybody here? Sturba? Okay. Hamm?
Okay. Uh, next in your packet were the accounts payable on payroll. The payroll for the pay period under 52921 of $46,468.91. Uh, also bills in the general fund of $49,404.35 and the MFT fund of $4,795.54 and from the BDD, $450 for a total of $54,649.89. Are there any questions or comments on the bills? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Move by trustee Hamm, second by trustee Sluse.
Roll call vote. Hamm?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sturba?
All right. Next public comments, hand or questions?
Yeah. Can I be my first?
Yep, go ahead and stand up, state your name and...
My name is Emma Ozo. I own the styled canine uptown and I'm here to discuss the, what's the official, the beautification downtown restoration?
Sure.
Gig. So I am pro one-way and you'll have to forgive me because I'm not so great with my cardinal cross points, but what I believe would be best is one-way, Second Street going north, Railroad Street going south and Main Street going west. So I believe what that would be is that people turning off of Route 50 would becoming, would turn right if that would be west. I'm hoping that's correct. That way it would make a big square and I think that would be easiest for people to, um, get used to. That would make a big circle and then everybody can hopefully transition into that smoothly. I also think that on Second Street, making it north is easy for people to turn into parking spots right since people majority come into Second Street off of Main and tend to turn right first and then they utilize the second parking spots the other way because people tend to park on the right side because they go to Mon, they go to Suzie's, they go to styled canine and then they take up the other side of the street. So that's my opinion and I think that would be best. That's nearly all I've got, I think.
Thank you.
Well, thanks. Emma, did you sign in? I did, yeah. Okay, thanks. Anybody else who wants to talk, oh, you sign in.
My name's Scott Johnson. This is partner with Mari Smith who's, who will be hopefully soon owner of Suzie's in Pennsylvania. Mari made a decision to come out here. She thought downtown area of Piattone had a chance to be resuscitated, revitalized quite a bit and she wanted to go through investment including looking at even the side of the building and other things like that. And, um, we haven't closed on the business yet, but she's definitely wants to. It's something I'm over with, but she wants to see downtown. She doesn't care which way the streets go. Sidewalks and streets gotta be upgraded. The streetlight for downtown, it's gotta be done, just has to be done. It's gotta be resuscitated a little bit. Revitalized, flowers, plants, we just make it look, you know, it's, it'll never be like a Frankfurt. I don't think you want it to be Frankfurt. If it ever be Mantino, that's a completely different gamble. You're your own downtown, you've got great little history here and let's just show it off and make it, bring this little area back and it won't affect taxes at all. From what I understand, not on CPA, second factor tax rate. So let's just put a little bit of money into the downtown area and see what happens. I'm sorry.
Yeah, right?
Just give them repaved and repaid sidewalks done.
So you're buying Suzie's?
Uh, actually Mari.
All right, anybody else?
Ed Nelson, the Rowanah Ape. I would be against the one-way streets in Piattone. We're a small farm town. We're growing. Everybody that I have talked to over in my neighborhood and a bunch of the seniors that I meet with almost daily at McDonald's, they're gonna be confused with the one-ways. They're also against having the, is it parallel parking? They, a lot of them can't parallel park. So that means they're gonna have to park over on Railroad Street if that's, there's parking gonna be over there. Some of them can't walk very well. We have a lot of seniors in town that can't walk very well. So it's gonna be less people that wanna come into our downtown area and go to Mantino or other towns, Beach or, and spend their money there than they do here. The other, next thing, um, we have a garage sale coming up and it's great. Everybody gets to get rid of a lot of stuff. About five or six years ago, I think it was the week prior to this week and for some reason it was changed. We've got a lot of things going on this weekend and wish the board would, and the business owners would look at spreading it out. This town needs things to do, not all in one weekend. The chaylors had their car wash, there's a garage sale. Shoot, there's a couple other things. The dance studios had their dance this weekend. So if the business owners could look at that and spread things out. Finally, more events for adults, not against kids or children, but for the adults in town are needed downtown. Maybe some type of street music, block off the street. Even by the Legion area could be blocked off without any, blocking off Second Street or Main Street. Just something for us to do. That should do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Cross, I own the furniture store in the funeral home downtown Piattone. I've expressed my opinion to the ad hoc committee and the village board previously, but just thought I would take the opportunity to reiterate. I'm not against fixing the streets, fixing the sidewalks, changing the streetlights, beautifying the downtown. I am against the one-way concept. I think it's gonna cause chaos. My other concern is as you widen the sidewalks, this is something I thought about over the weekend. You know, we have a issue downtown of some businesses not cleaning off their sidewalks. It's gotten better since some more of the buildings have gotten occupied. I used to shovel Main Street from Railroad all the way to First Street just so my side of the street was clean. But now I've got some help, you know, with new businesses there. But as you widen the sidewalks and narrow the streets, you're gonna create a lot bigger job for public works. You're gonna give the business owners more sidewalk to shovel and less room to put the snow. Right now, the only place we can put the snow in the winter is into the street. We have no other place to put it. And I was just wondering if you had talked with the police department about this, gotten their opinion or if you've talked to the fire district as you go to this one-way concept? Because again, as you narrow the streets, you're gonna create some issues there that might be good to look at now before you create, you know, the design that you're looking to do. Thank you.
Angie, you want it?
Sure. Yeah, so I just have a couple.
Sure.
A couple updates. So as far as from engineering, the final punch lifts from Corning, we're still just working through that, final restorations and things like of that nature. We also are starting flushing tomorrow. So that will be a process that takes to complete, it'll take about a month and a half, about six weeks. We'll divide into three areas. So first will be north of Corning for about two weeks and then south of Corning and then east of Route 50. There should have been a swift reach that went out today. If it didn't go out yet, it's gonna go out tonight, letting everybody north of Corning know that flushing will begin. People might experience a little change in pressure, nothing alarming. Just wanted to let everybody know that we'll be doing that. So if you see us out flushing over the next six weeks. That's it.
Nothing new from IAPA?
I have nothing yet. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, if not, we'll move on to committee reports. Administrative report?
Building permits have gone down significantly for reroutes. In 2019 and 2020, there were the majority of our permits issued. However, and that was due to a storm, storm events. 2021, they've significantly decreased. Overall number permits though are relatively the same. The, uh, the village is gonna have a booth at the block party and we're gonna focus on code compliance. So we're gonna just be providing information to people about common code issues and just trying to get word out on, um, on those types of things. We'll have the brochure, we'll have giveaways and a suggestion box. So hopefully we'll see you all there. The Illinois Municipal League, they will conduct their, uh, conference this year in September in person. So if any board members interested in attending that, let me know. That's all I have, thank you.
Any questions for the administrator? All right, we'll move to the downtown ad hoc committee report.
Okay, we met on June 11th. We discussed, um, a project scope and cost estimate we received from Upland Design for specifically the Railroad Street parking area. It was broken down to a north area, basically from the Legion to the north and then a southern area, um, behind the, behind the bars there. And the, uh, the two combined totals on that, uh, project estimate were 1.1 million. We talked about different ideas of saving some money with, uh, different, um, plants and trees and that type of stuff. But the rough estimate was in your packet there at 1.1. We further discussed, um, giving some direction to Upland Design for the overall downtown, uh, revitalization design. We felt it was important to commit to a design just to get a cost estimate similar to what we got with the railroad. So to do that, um, the committee agreed, uh, just for budgetary concerns, not a final, um, final commitment to any traffic direction or parking design, but we did agree that a one-way direction on Second Street and a one-way direction on Main with angle parking both ways would be the direction we need to give to Upland to, to achieve a budgetary, um, cost scope of, of this goal project we're looking to complete. So, um, I think that covered most of the downtown.
Questions from the board on the committee report?
Is there a reason why we're doing one-way on both streets and not just leaving it how it is?
Well, I think the consensus of the committee was, um, improving, um, the public space, not only just the, the street space. I mean, improving what we have. And it seemed like the, the best compromise to achieve no loss in parking and improve public space was one-way.
Then I just talked to a couple of people and the big people brought to me and they said they would sit and not change at all. They need to do, you know, one-way repair of parking.
We had a lot of support from the business owners at the start of the meeting.
Yeah.
Otherwise. We're not gonna, we, we've all agreed as at the committee level, we're not going to get full 100% consensus from the business owners, the property owners or the public. We just have to make the right decision, hope the changes are good for the long run.
And to clarify, all we're doing is developing a budget. We're not doing anything other than creating a budget. So if you tear up the streets, if you tear up the sidewalk, it's roughly the same cost as if it's one-way or two-way.
Yeah, I just like, uh, because I got friends that work at Frankfurt and they talked about that their, uh, village actually talking about tearing up Kansas Street because they got parallel parking to go to diagonal parking.
So, so Monday or Friday night when we had the meeting, we went through all of that and we realized that there's a lot of possibilities and a lot of towns are going different directions. But all we're doing is we're just creating the budget.
Okay, moving on, police committee report, we're gonna send you again, Scott.
Yeah. Let me guess, I chewed you for that one. Let's see, we met, uh, May 25th. We discussed a speed sign on Reiki Road. That road sees, um, 500 to 700 vehicles per day. As far as cars speeding above 35 miles an hour, it accounted for about 1.39% of both vehicles daily, which is a small, small percentage for that traffic volume. We discussed, um, personnel hiring. Discussed, um, truck enforcement potential and also a squad car purchase. And I think that's about it.
Yeah, I think we talked a little bit about the animal control a little bit too.
Oh, yeah, yep.
So, um, what, where did you guys come up with like the truck enforcement? Was there any? Did you do anything with that or with the length?
We didn't do anything with that, I mean, no.
We asked, we asked the chief to kinda start thinking about that a little bit.
Okay.
You know, I, I think Phil said that it's very difficult to do, but we asked him to kind of start looking into that a little bit more.
Yeah, okay.
Is this truck control where they drive through town or?
Weight.
Well, it was weight and length, it was the length of trucks as well.
Yeah, I mean, something's gotta be done over in the old part of town. These guys driving these trucks are idiots. They don't care. Yeah, I had a guy drop a six feet into my yard last week and then when he made the turn, I thought he was gonna knock down two of the trees we had just planted. He was that far up in the thing before I could get to him. I mean, he took off, you know. But they start on the street and they say, well, my GPS says.
Right.
And the next thing I get, if I get a hold of one of those, I'm gonna throw it. I mean, I'm, I'm so irritated, I mean, it's ridiculous. They don't care how much property damage they do. All they care about is where their final destination is.
Yeah.
They've knocked down the telephone pole on my house probably half a dozen times in the last two years. And it's obvious it's not a truck route, you know? But they don't care, they don't think, they just, but we gotta do something. We gotta have some kind of imposing fine that just makes their life miserable.
Yeah, I think part of it too, another besides, you know, enforcing that it's not a truck route is somehow getting the businesses to adjust their addresses so that they're, like, I talked to Black Diamond, you know, their address is First Street. Well, it should be off Route 50 if they could, you know, just change it.
It would be like a Harlem address.
Right, if they just change it on Google Maps.
Or if they can get signs of some sort.
Yeah, I say signs aren't, aren't as good because they just punch it in their GPS and they just follow that, so.
Black Diamond is the biggest violator of the people that go there.
I think if we can get that changed, um, in addition, like said, to some enforcement, that'll make a big difference.
But it's terrible. You know, we had problems with it. It was a grate down on the corner of Sumner and Second Street that we had to special order. It's because they cut across, I mean, they're not like running on the edge of the road. They're four feet up onto the street and they rolled, ran over that thing and it was cast iron and it busted and it took us two months to get a new one. They don't care.
The chief also said too, like, what's hard right now is that, um, they used to use the scales out on 57 to weigh the trucks and those aren't open all the time. So we really have no way to weigh the trucks at this time to enforce that part of the plan.
Most of those trucks that we're avoiding though, they just are getting from the north to the south. They're not meandering through the neighborhood. But these guys will meander through and, I mean, it's, you wouldn't believe it.
I know Future has like Emerson, he's in charge of the truck route. They have scales on it. They have a pickup truck they bought and he had scales for it where they can do portable scales. And I think they have a, no truck route Indiana, I think it's nothing over 53 feet. And there's no trucks allowed inside town and everything, they have ordinance like that.
Yeah, I mean, that was what I, the 53 feet was what I was, I heard from other towns and, you know, that's an easy one to enforce, probably needs to take much.
Yeah.
And so.
Is that from the front of the semi to the back of the trailer?
No, it's just the trailer.
Kiss the trailer.
That's, that's mandatory to go illegally.
Right.
If you're beyond that, there has some problem, yes.
Illinois Municipal League also brought this up as an initiative. One of the communities having similar problems, many communities have similar problems. So another front where we can kind of address this issue is through that initiative where we can have direct contact with either, like, Amazon is also a problem where they just punch it into the GPS and, and they just go wherever and sometimes it's not an appropriate route. So, you know, we wanna work with the big companies, the mapping companies, the Amazons and address it from their end too. And it's, it's very bureaucratic. So we're trying to work on initiative through the Illinois Municipal League to, um, get that addressed. So public safety can have a direct access to somebody at Amazon where they can update something in their system and it won't happen again.
The majority of the problems now with the Amazon trucks is with these guys hauling steel.
Yeah.
It's absolutely unbelievable.
Okay, so we'll keep working on that. Police committees can, need to have another committee meeting here pretty soon so they can follow up on that. Engineer report, Troy is off this week because White was supposed to be induced today with their second child.
Third.
So, third child, yeah. Did you wanna just read his report or?
Yeah, he just has, um, two updates. Uh, one's on West Street resurfacing, our IDOT project there. We had a pre-construction meeting and I do believe Bob mentioned that he attended that the last time he was here. So that's moving forward. Oh, lost my chi chi. Probably going to, um, there was discussion about waiting till after 4th of July, but we're gonna move forward with that construction. Then there's the MFT resurfacing project, but that we're doing, um, in-house here for, um, North and Wilson. And that'll, that video opening will begin, um, June 21st and we'll award that project and then construction will start in mid-July.
I've got some comments. So we had a successful blood drive back the last week of May. I wanna thank the Legion for partnering with the village and American Red Cross to get that done. It was, it was very successful. They got, uh, 20% more than they anticipated. We're gonna try to do this on a, uh, I think every two months or, so that, uh, the next date is August 9th and then after that's October 27th. Want to thank everybody who took part in Memorial Day celebration. It was a, you know, a nice day. It's always a great ceremony. They had a great band this year. And, um, just encourage everybody, uh, next year to, to get out there. It's a, it's a very nice, uh, small-town ceremony. Want to compliment the Public Works Department, all the residents. The village is really looking nice. You know, our code department's getting after people who've got tall grass and I, I just think everything's looking great. The trees that we planted in the parkways are really coming along and, um, it's just nice, you know. We, we kinda get blinders on how nice our town looks because we're just used to it. But, you know, you go other places and, you know, you just, we're thankful that our residents and our, uh, public works departments take such good care of town. June 24th, which is coming up, uh, next week, we're having a taxing body meeting with the fire department, library district, school district, uh, the townships. We invited Will County as well. I, I'd like to make this kind of a quarterly event where we just get together and just tell each other what we're doing. Just, I mean, we're all using the same pot of money from the taxpayers so if we can, if there's any way that we can collaborate, you know, it's good for everybody. Like somebody said, we got a lot of things going on this week. We got the block party and garage sales. Chamber's done a great job at putting together a fun event. Looks like the weather's gonna be nice. Imagine still could use some volunteers or, no, you're pretty good on the beer tent or?
Yeah, some volunteers Saturday night.
Yeah, so if you're interested at all, uh, contact, uh, the Chamber or Julie. We've got a new event happening tomorrow at the, um, Icebox Creamery. It's a cone with a cop event from 6:00 to 8:00. We're gonna have two of our police officers out front. They've got coupons for a small ice cream cone and, you know, it's just an opportunity for residents to come out and, uh, you know, meet a police officer if they have a question, you know, about anything in town about the police, uh, that's what they're, you know, they're happy to talk to anybody. So take advantage of that and, you know, get some free ice cream. Update on Second Street Saloon. We did have, uh, published a, a request for proposals for demolition of that. We did have a asbestos survey done. There is a little bit of asbestos there. So we've gotta get, uh, a request for proposals for asbestos removal before we do the demolition. So that's moving along.
Did they say where the asbestos was?
Yeah, there's a long report.
In the floor, you know, typical places, you know, that pool tile.
Pipe insulation, four tiles, ceiling tiles.
Yeah, they, I mean, they, it was quite an extensive report. I mean, most of it doesn't have asbestos luckily, but I mean, there's a few products that do, so. We've talked a little bit over the last year about doing adjudication for, uh, non-moving violations, you know, parking tickets, uh, code violations, that type of thing. code violations, that type of thing. The administrator and I met with the mayor and administrator of Beacher a couple weeks ago. And they are, they wanna move forward with this process and, you know, combining with, with us to get this done. So the next step forward is we wanted to get all of us together with our police chiefs and kind of figure out if this makes sense for us, so that's kinda still on the table. I met with Representative Haas and our county board rep, Judy Ogala, about the I-57 interchange. They're concerned that the state is spending money on a new interchange at Eagle Lake Road instead of fixing up the interchange here in Peatone and also the Moni interchange needs help. So, you know, we were kind of brainstorming on, you know, who we can talk to. And, you know, we've already been in IDOT's ear about it through Senator Joyce. So we're just trying to get more on IDOT's radar that, you know, we wanna be on their plan to upgrade that interchange. Speaking of I-57 interchange, there's been a little bit of movement, you know, with the easement issue on Eighty-Eighth Avenue. We had our, you know, fingers crossed that something'll happen there. I mean, we got kind of our approval from IDOT and WillDOT for improving that intersection. And, you know, if we get this easement done, that means we can move forward. You know, Sue Hospital, the developer, he's ready to, you know, get a shovel out there ASAP. So, you know, keep your fingers crossed on that. Wilmington Road sidewalk, you know, we did have some engineering done on that. Troy sent me, so they, they kind of figured out where all the right-of-ways are and where the property lines are. And for the most part, it was good news. We should be able to fit a sidewalk in there, but there's a couple spots, properties that we may have to get a little bit of easement from. Bad news is we got news yesterday, today, that we didn't get the ITAP grant that we'd asked for. So we'll, if we wanna get this done, you know, we'll have to do it ourselves. And as soon as Troy gets back from his maternity leave, I'll get after him to kind of, you know, give us some estimates on what we cost. Instead, you know, his proposal, if we were gonna do it through a grant, we were gonna go all the way from Ratchee Road all the way to McDonald's and kind of wrap it around, you know, Oriole Drive. But I think if we can at least do from, is it Meadow Lane?
Meadow Lane.
Meadow Lane to Gull, whatever it's called, Gull Drive. At least that'll get people from one subdivision to the other. So we'll see, we'll get Troy working on that. I did get a call from a resident who's got some concerns about golf carts and ATVs using the park and... And I told him I think it'd be best if they came to a police committee meeting to kind of express his concerns with that, what can be done. Personally, I'd like you guys also to talk about enforcement more of our golf cart, golf cart ordinance. You know, people are supposed to be wearing seat belts and little kids aren't supposed to be sitting on those things. And it's really not a whole lot of enforcement on that, so it's something else for you guys to discuss. Finally, I'd, you know, I'd like to thank the downtown committee, I'd like to thank the business owners who got together and to express their concerns, the more input we get, I think is great. And, yeah, so I look forward to moving forward with that. All right, we don't have any old business, add a new business, a special event in Class C-one, one-day liquor license for DV, the events, Inc., game on. So in your package, you got the application and Vicki is here to tell you what she wants to do.
Did you can't tell by my kindergarten dry, what's this typical, did you put it in there? Yeah. I can put it up on the screen. I'm not sure what I'm allowed, I mean, I was basically given a blank canvas and I kind of followed what we did two or three years ago when we had it. I just have a couple of questions, I'm willing to work with you guys, you just need to tell me what to do. As far as what kind of fence we're gonna put around it? We're making stanchions out of two-by-fours, which cost a million dollars right now. So we're making stanchions, painting the base black, the post red, and then having the white chain. So it's a clear understanding, you stay inside. You know, I mean, it's not gonna stop people from going over, we'll obviously monitor that. But it will be, you know, and I'm gonna have signs posted, can't take alcohol out, all that stuff. I just need to know, do I need to have those stanchions or that gated on all four sides with one entrance? Those are the things I'm not clear about, so. I'm willing to work with you guys, you just need to tell me what to do because I don't, they just draw something off there. I mean, you don't wanna give me free rein.
Typically, a one entrance point is...
But I can't flex, chief was pretty clear, I can't flex sidewalks, so... Do you want the sidewalk, you do want the sidewalk then gated in? So you want a fence on all four sides with one entrance in, correct?
I'm not, I'm not, no. Well, we'll let the board discuss it.
Okay, what do you want? I mean, obviously, if I don't have to build stanchions for a fourth side, that would be awesome. But if that's what I have to do, then that's what I have to do.
Well, that worked out real well before when you had the only entrance, you had to go through the bar. And you had a three-sided...
You didn't have to go through the bar because they wouldn't let me block off the sidewalk.
Three years ago?
Yeah.
I thought you had to go through the bar to get into the...
No, because he didn't want me to block the sidewalk. So that's what I'm saying, like, it's kind of...
So I guess it's the board's opinion, I mean, I would like to just see one entrance and, you know, one exit. I don't think it's a big deal blocking off the sidewalk since the street is gonna be closed. So it's not like people are gonna be competing with vehicles.
And that would be helpful because then I can use the building as one of the sides and we don't have to have the fence.
And you'd enter through the bar?
Yes, so we can come to the left of the...
Nobody could enter from the street, just going into it.
Right, you'd have to come around to do it, yeah, that would be fine, I could do that.
You could monitor that a lot easier too.
And we did decide, we're not gonna put the cheap white tables with the cheap white chairs. We're gonna move our nice black furniture out there with the umbrellas. And we are trying to make it a little nicer because of everything that's going on with the beautification proposal downtown. We are a hundred percent for it, obviously. And I just think that if people see how nice a simple little outdoor patio can look with the nice umbrellas, you know, we're gonna make it look nice. And I just think that it can only help the case as far as the beautification, you know, down Second Street, because we're all for it.
Any other questions for that? So you guys, I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve this with, you know, one entrance only and... Yeah.
Motion.
Second.
And moved by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Moravka.
Jones?
Yep.
Wilco, Jones, Moravka?
Yes.
Sturbo?
Yep.
Sluse?
Upstain.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm gonna preemptalize, but I have to leave right away because I gotta call Bingo in twenty minutes. I just don't wanna be rude.
I gotta go to...
Call to Bingo?
Yes.
I am the approval recommendations downtown ad hoc committee to guide Upland on the master plan. So as you heard from Trustee Ham's report, their recommendation was to tell Upland to move forward with coming up with the final, not final numbers, but estimated numbers for the revitalization like we've been talking about. To preserve the parking, which, you know, the business owners made loud and clear that they don't want any less parking. We, they just recommended going with a one-way street and keeping the angled parking. So does anybody wanna make a motion in that effect?
I'd just like to interject a couple of things. We had that ad hoc meeting with the business, they were all, I think they were all property owners on Main Street. And the number one thing was no parallel parking. Number two, maintain as much parking as is possible because in addition to the parking situation now, we've got like twenty storefronts that are not occupied by businesses. And hopefully, as things go on, those will be occupied, which will stress the amount of parking even, even more. Everybody was for enhancing the downtown, getting that crown out of the street, make nice sidewalks, nice street lights. One-way parking, or one-way driving, I mean, not so much. But to maintain the parks, in small towns, people want access to the businesses very easily. Routing people out behind railroad street, it's nice for overflow, but if people, unless you're going in one of the bars, they're not gonna go through there and walk around. And they're pretty adamant about all those things. And they were, these are all people that have a big stake, all property owners. And like I said, nobody's against, I mean, if not, nobody's against spending money and making it nice. They just have certain criteria they feel are extremely important. I just wanna make that known. And we're really not locking in on anything at this point, we're just getting pricing on parts of the project, is that correct?
Correct.
And I have two more questions too. Mike, your report, Pete, how come we didn't have a parade, a memorial parade? Several people have asked me about that, who's in charge of that?
It's the Legion.
The Legion is, okay, they seem to like that. And the other thing was, we should announce that, you know, we've got bags over all the one and two-year-old trees for watering, which is great, but we don't wanna forget the homeowners about trees that are three and four years old and that they need to put some water on those to keep them alive.
We'll bring that up in the correspondence. So getting back to the agenda item, Ken, do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a, make a motion.
I'll second it.
So the motion is to approve the recommendation of the downtown ad hoc committee to direct Upland to finish with their plan with keeping all the haybowl parking, the one-way street. Any further discussion? Not, Wilco?
Colvo, Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
No, I don't think...
Sturbo.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Mike, I don't think you can vote on this.
Oh, sorry. Go vote. Upstain.
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 Cause he owns property, that's a tip, yeah.
Surviving, Captain, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, moving on. Amendments and implementation of ordinance twelve dash oh-three, ordinance adding a new chapter, vacant, one fifty-five vacant buildings to the village of Peatone Code Title fifteen. So if you recall, a month or two ago, we passed a vacant building ordinance. The next day, I got a call from a real estate, what are they, it's like their professional organization from the state...
Illinois Realtors Association.
Illinois Realtors Association. So they, you know, they wanted to look at the ordinance, they were concerned about, you know, any kind of regulation on their business. Their main concerns were, we had some wording in there that we have to have, an agent has to be in Will County. And they've taken the term agent to mean a real estate agent, which we told them, you know, that's not the case. It's just somebody who's representing the property owner. But, you know, if it makes them happy, you know, we can change the word agent. The other thing that they didn't like was that we had a requirement in there that people have to post, you know, some kind of sign on their building that this is who owns the building and they're phoning. Because they, because they want to do that, people know it's vacant and they're gonna, you know, squat in it and, you know, cause damage. And then what was the third, something about probate? So they're concerned, have somebody...
They could not articulate their concern, so I really...
I think they're saying like, somebody dies and that house is vacant and it's in probate, they're concerned they would have to register the building as they go through probate. Right, is that what it was? So anyway...
It wasn't very clear.
I told them that, you know, we bring it before the board and... See if you guys had any suggestions or...
What's the bill if we don't do what they want?
I mean...
They're not here to represent themselves, right?
No, they're not, no.
I did tell them about the meeting that we were discussing it and I gave you this email with his comments.
Yeah, so... So they're, the guy who contacted us is like their, he's not even a real estate agent, he's their, like, director of this group. Who knows, and what do you think?
I have no real comment, I doubt the ordinance is appropriate as is.
Yeah. And if it's that big a deal to them, they would've been here. But they're not.
Well, we'll let them know, we talked about it and we're willing for those changes.
Sorry, but I do kind of agree though with putting the name and number on the building only because I think they're right, people would squat in there or damage it on purpose knowing that nobody's there. Is there a way that if they know it's vacant or whatnot, I mean, at least we could have a list of it? So if anybody had questions about it, at least maybe they could call you or the village secretaries or whatnot to ask questions about it or who to contact instead of having it there for the whole publicity? We change something like that possibly?
Yeah, I mean, anything can be changed, you know, talk to the board. I mean, it's already public information, so you're not hiding anything, right? You pick up your phone, type in the address and phone call on GIS, tell you who owns it, right?
Right.
I mean, it's already written into the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, like, we would have all that information. Maybe anyone wouldn't have their phone number.
Right. I mean, that's, you know, that's not a huge deal to me, I mean, I don't really care one way or the other if we have it on there. The big thing to me is that we have the information if there is a code violation or, you know, who we call. So, I mean, if, you know, throw these guys a bone if you just wanna take that requirement out of there, I don't, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me, so.
Well, but are we gonna require them to register with the village?
Yes.
Yeah, just their name and put it up there, it won't be posted on the door.
Okay.
But I guess it's, yeah, I mean, it's a cat and mouse game.
Right.
That's what we're trying to prevent is, you have, you have a vacant building, you're, you should be incentivized to
Right.
not fall, fall into disrepair.
Yeah.
There's lots of vacant buildings, but if they're, the grass is mowed, the doors are closed, you know, it's locked up, we're not gonna be bothering the owner of that building.
Right.
It's the buildings that are vacant that are falling apart that this ordinance is designed for.
Yeah.
So I, I'm less sympathetic to the owner of a building that's letting his building fall into disrepair than I am to somebody who's taking care of their building.
Right.
So, the point's muted on me as far as what they want, I mean...
Well, that's the only thing I would wanna change is just, because even the people that are keeping up on their yards and everything, if you have a big sign on their front door that says, "This property is vacant, here's the phone number of the owner", I don't think that's really fair to them if, like you said, they're keeping up with it and everything. I just don't think it's fair to, like, just advertise that part of it. That's all. That's all.
All right, well, um, yeah.
So, I'll make the motion with those changes.
Okay.
I'll second that, maybe, with changes.
This ordinance has already been approved.
Yeah, so we'll have to...
We need a new ordinance.
Right, so this was just discussion.
Yeah, it has to be...
So, you can tell us, that we'll work on that.
Yeah, okay, maybe it would have to be a new written ordinance amended.
Okay, okay.
So, just, you just wanna address the, the sign on the outside of the building, correct?
Yeah, okay.
And then, we did talk to them about, you know, maybe clarifying the definition of agent.
I mean, as long as we're gonna do something, we could put something in there. Yeah. Okay, moving on, ordinances, uh, ordinance approving a real estate sale contract, authorizing the purchase by the village of real property located adjacent Illinois Central Railroad Right of Way, Giffen, Illinois, approving the expenditure, um, now, that says downtown TIF, but I'm gonna change it to say business development district funds for such purpose. Uh, this would be ordinance twenty-one-ten, and, um, we, you know, talked about this last time, and there's information in your packet about it. So, basically purchasing this, uh, parking area, uh, adjacent to the village hall between Corney and Main, and then purchasing part of the parking area from, uh, on the west side of the tracks, from Main to Crawford. Um, I, I wanna change it to business development district fund because, um, we, I don't know if we have enough money to cover, uh, in the TIF district funds that we have right now.
So, the railroad will keep from the tracks west, and we will buy from that point on. And then, we have a long-term lease agreement from...
Well, it's ten years. That was the longest they've gone.
Really?
But the cool part is, is you know where the old fire state, fire building is? They're selling us that part.
That comes with the purchase?
Yeah. So, they can't do anything along the whole part of the tracks because we're now in the way. So...
And plus, you know, Drolleys, oh, they own all the way up to the right of way, and you own all up the right of way. Um, so, it's not like they can run another line through there or anything.
Well, you know, at one time, there were three lines coming through town.
Yeah.
But I, I don't have to sit back fifty feet from the rail, I don't know, I don't know how close it is. It's a lot closer than fifty feet.
Right. So, um, the purchase price for this was twenty-five thousand, just so, for the record. Is there a motion to approve this?
With the, uh, change to the ordinance, delete the reference to the tip and insert, um, the business district.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mike, yeah.
Mike, yeah, on the head of it.
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, seconded by trustee Moravka.
Roll call vote. Sluse?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones? Oh, Jones, no.
Nope.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yes.
Amendment Jones, Upstain.
Upstain.
Okay, uh, ordinance two, which will be twenty-one-eleven, uh, is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a first amendment to the property lease agreement with Illinois Central Railroad Company. Property located adjacent to Illinois Central Railroad Right of Way, Giffen, Illinois, approving expenditures, um, again, we're changing it to business development district funds for lease payment. So, um, in your packet, there was the, uh, modified amendment that is extending our lease for ten years from this point. And, uh, it was for, uh, a price of twelve hundred dollars a year payable upfront. So, be a payment of twelve thousand dollars. And, so this would cover, uh, the additional part of that parking area that we wanted to develop.
A motion there?
Second. Is that a motion with the, uh, changing to the business development district?
Yes, and, um... Okay, it's, it's clear enough, okay, I picture there's one danger. It's, it's clear enough that it's a ten-year extension.
Yes. The motion is second.
Yep.
So, moved by trustee Bowden, seconded by trustee Ham.
Roll call vote. Sluse?
Bowden first.
Oh, sorry.
I, I...
Bowden?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Upstain.
Sturba?
Yes.
Okay, oh, is that everything?
I believe so.
Okay, motion here, okay. Uh, next on the item, on the agenda is, uh, I want to talk about and get approval from the board for using a consent agenda. Uh, consent agenda is just a, a little time-saving tool that we can use to approve, um, things with just one motion. So, for instance, um, we can approve the minutes, we can approve the payroll, um, we could approve, um, you know, items like, you know, the, a group wants to sell tickets, you know, Boy Scouts wanna sell tickets, or, you know, something that nobody's gonna really argue about. You can ask questions, so, I mean, that doesn't mean you can't ask a question about an item. It just means that we can just kinda lump those all together and just have one roll call vote. So, is that about covered?
Yes, that, that, the consent agenda item would just be on the, on the agenda, it would say consent agenda. And then, all of the items that are being placed on the consent agenda are listed, let's say, one through four or, or five. And, uh, the, uh, the first question is that the consent agenda and the mayor or clerk would ask if any member of the board wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda. If there is a yes, then that gets removed from the consent agenda. If there's a no, it stays on the, it stays on the consent agenda. But the proper procedure is always to read every item on the consent agenda and ask the board if there is any board member that wishes to remove that item from the consent agenda. Assuming there's none, you say none, if there is one, it gets moved down, down below. That's basically the procedure, and other than that, the mayor's correct, it's one vote. It's always, of course, a roll call vote. The other just comment in general is you don't put on the consent agenda anything that, uh, spends, uh, money of the village or theoretically creates a liability, but this is a more complicated issue. But, but spending the money, uh, or approving a contract that spends money cannot go on the consent agenda. Uh, almost anything else, I mean, you can even put the, uh, you know, permit for a block party or something. You, you can put those on the consent agenda also.
So, you, can you put payroll and...
Yes, oh, yeah.
You can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you need to say payroll, and you should say, you know, payroll or bill, bills and payroll in total amount of...
And that can be on the consent agenda?
Yes, it can be.
Okay. Okay. All right, any comments on that at all?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the use of consent agenda moving forward.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, seconded by trustee Sluse.
A roll call vote. Moravka?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes, yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on, uh, this is just a discussion item, not an action item. Uh, changing the age, a person can serve alcohol in the Peaton Liquor Code from twenty-one years old to eighteen years old. This was brought by one of the tavern owners to our, uh, attention. They would like to have the ability for, uh, somebody eighteen, nineteen, or twenty to be able to, uh, uh, serve liquor, so bring liquor from the bar to a table, uh, not as a bartender, so not somebody's actually mixing drinks or giving out drinks. The Illinois Liquor Code allows this. Uh, we're a little more restrictive, we don't allow it until they're twenty-one. Uh, there are some, there are many communities that do allow it. So, uh, I, I, again, I said I'd bring it before the board, uh, I think, Amy, did you include that, some language? Can the...
I said I would, but it doesn't look like I did.
Didn't get in there. So, there's some pretty simple language that, um, the chief found from some neighboring communities that, uh, identify, you know, what a server is and, you know, specifically, you know, they're not gonna be bartending, they're not gonna be there by themselves, um, you know, that type of thing. So, I, I, I think, you know, especially for restaurants, um, you know, this might be a good thing, you know, because then you can have a, a server bringing a beer to a table, um, so...
Right.
With the labor shortages the way it is, I don't know, it might not be a bad idea, so...
I think it's just good to sync up with the state, have the same regulations as the state.
Yeah.
For no other reason.
Only one, one thing to think about, and we would just have to write this in or let me know how you feel about it. This was brought up, um, by council, that, um, if you have an eighteen-year-old server, are they checking IDs at the table for, for people who are purchasing versus the bartender who should be twenty-one or over? So, we just kinda maybe have to smooth that out unless you feel like an eighteen-year-old server can check the IDs.
I think they can...
And then take the order.
Yeah.
And then...
What's the state require? They allow the server?
They allow you to determine it. Essentially, they allow the local entity to, to do, make that determination.
Seems like an unnecessary complication to me.
All right, so, it sounds like there's a consensus to move forward with that. I mean, we've got a lot of other things going on in the liquor code that we wanna change. Um, so, this'll just be one more thing to throw in there, so... Okay? Item G, hometown heroes program, uh, in your packet, uh, there was some, uh, information, uh, that, um, we've put together, uh, this is a blatant, uh, we're stealing this from Mantino. Uh, they, you know, got some nice banners up there, everybody loves them. Uh, this is kind of a no-brainer program. It's gonna be pretty revenue-neutral, uh, the banners are gonna cost us about forty-five dollars. The brackets for the polls are gonna be about eighty-five, so, we're asking for a donation of a hundred and fifty to do this. That'll cover a little bit of the public works guys' time, put these up. Uh, what I'd like to propose this first year, normally, they put them up from, you know, Memorial Day through, uh, Labor Day. Um, obviously, we're, you know, behind the curve on that already. Like to kinda do a pilot program this year and maybe get the ones, like, the first twenty people. We're gonna, we'll put them up in the downtown area, we've got, like, twenty-two polls downtown. Uh, and maybe that'll generate some interest, and then, moving forward, we can move out to other areas of the village. I spoke with the owners of Terry's, Drolleys, and Earl, um, and asked them if we could use, you know, their poll, their light polls, and they were all a hundred percent in favor of it. Uh, there's been some talk, you know, about, you know, can we put them on comment polls or not? And so, uh, you know, we'll, we'll deal with that when we get, uh, get to it. But, um, at least we've got something to start, and I said we've got our old polls, and then those polls along the highway, I think it, you know, would be a great start to this program, so...
I'll take three downtown.
So, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll get these printed out and published, and I'll get it out on Facebook. And, like I said, I, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a hard time, um, you know, I think we're gonna hit the first twenty pretty soon. And then, um, I think our problem is gonna be finding the polls to put them on rather than, you know, get the people to do it. So, I think it'll be a great program, so... So, um, I would like a motion to approve us, uh, moving forward with this program.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Moravka, seconded by trustee Jones.
Roll call vote. Moravka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Ham?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yeah.
And Bowden?
Yes.
All right, questions open press? Nothing. Um, correspondence, um, like trustee Jones says, uh, it's been kinda dry this spring and early summer, so, uh, please water your Parkway trees, or water all your trees, but especially the Parkway trees, the village would really appreciate that. Um, any other comments at all?
Just be picking up your dog food, please.
Yeah, there you go. And, uh, yeah, everybody, hopefully, get out and enjoy community days and the garage sales. Be careful driving, uh, this weekend. People will stop for no reason if they see something they like in a garage sale, so, just be prepared for that. And, uh...
Oh, actually, if I could...
Yep.
The Friends of Music is also taking all donations after this garage sale.
Okay.
So, uh, they'll have a drop-off wait, um, outside the Peaton Veterinary Hospital on Saturday and Sunday. And all donations, uh, go to the Friends of Music, which is the fine arts booster for the entire school district.
Perfect, thank you. Anything else? Not, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, seconded by trustee Ham.
Sluse?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
Sturba?
Yeah.
Moravka?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes. Great. That's a good one.
See if it's thick. Any idea how much those scales cost?
No, I can ask them. I don't think they're too bad. Well, I didn't like the truck, they, the truck was like under two...